Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all here. We're just a couple of minutes away from beginning our meeting. Before we begin, I would invite you to stand and join me in the pledge and then Brian Powell will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we just want to pause and tell you how much we love you and how much we thank you for this wonderful city. You've blessed us tremendously and we just thank you so much for it. We just ask that you be with us tonight as we go through these deliberations and may it bring you honor and glory and may it be the best decisions for this city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Brian. All right. I'd like to again welcome you to tonight's regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, July 11th, 2023. And I'll call the meeting to order and ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Amelia Williams?
Here.
Jeff Watson? Mike Overton?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Rex Bailey? Randall Harriman?
Here.
Mark Fucharuz? Ernest Cake?
Here.
All right. Thank you. We're at item four in the agenda. This is the portion of each regular council meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our citizens. If we have residents that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, we ask that you go to the microphone, clearly state your name and address. Please keep your comments brief and understand that we won't be taking action on anything that you bring forward tonight. So, we got Mike? Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, Mike Gilbert, delivered to 11 West Maple. And I just have a question about red tags. And I know that there are some on the agenda tonight that are under ordinance for being raised. The house two doors down from me has been red tagged for well over a year and nothing's happening on it. The house next door had been red tagged. A permit was issued. They started construction. It's been ongoing for two and a half years. Nobody's working on it. It's now at a point where it's not, you know, a safety risk or an eyesore, but the other one is. And I just don't understand what the ordinance is and what the process is once it's been red tagged. How long do you have to address it?
It depends on how they react. That's the easy answer, but I'll let Ernest say. I apologize for Tom not being here. We've texted him. We thought he might be here.
Yeah, I didn't mean to blindside anybody, but...
That's okay.
You know, I saw those others were on the agenda and I just don't understand it. And so I'm hoping to have an understanding because the house next door to me was an issue and has been, has been before the council.
Yeah.
And the one I'm speaking of is 219.
219? Okay. And Tom, hopefully he'll be walking in here and you can ask him specifically about that, but we will if you don't get a chance to.
Okay.
Figure out what... But Ernest, you want to speak to any of that?
Well, it depends. There could be various reasons why a property is red tagged. It could be any number of reasons. It may not always result in it needing to be raised as an unsafe structure. There could be other reasons why it's red tagged. It just means it can't be occupied until certain conditions are met. Now, if it meets the qualifications to be raised that it's an unsafe structure, then there is a process both in the ordinance and state law that the city goes through and that's initiated by the building official, the building office. So, I don't know if that answers your question or not, but I do know that also the police department dispatch keeps a list of all properties that are red tagged. That way, if police get called to a certain address, they know if someone's allowed to be there or not. Because if it's red tagged, you're not supposed to be there unless you're working on it.
That particular address is also connected with a feral cat issue. There is a quote-unquote resident, not resident, of that property that goes to that property every day and feeds the feral cats. And so that issue is a continuing issue and that property is unsafe.
Is this at 219?
Yes, sir. And so I just, you know, I mean, a lot of people have put a lot of money on Maple Avenue and that's a big eyesore and I don't know what, I don't know what...
Let us, let us look into that, Mike, and we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Maple Avenue. Okay. Any other comments from residents? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Counsel, you've had an opportunity to look these over. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented. Got a motion of second to approve the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right. And item six, a public hearing, I'll turn over to our city attorney. Ernest?
Thank you. Counsel, item number 11 on the agenda is an ordinance amending a street name in the city from Savage Street to Marty Street. You may remember the residents of this street have requested the street name be changed. The ordinance requires, before you take up the ordinance at a public hearing, be held, notice was published by the city clerk as required in the ordinance. And also, every one of the property owners was mailed a certified letter about this hearing as well. And as of today, we got, out of 15, we got 11 green cards back out of 15. So, is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this? If not, then we'll take up the ordinance when we get to item number 11.
All right. Good deal. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. Yep. All right. Thank you. Item seven, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, counsel?
I'll move for A and B.
Okay, we've got a motion of second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Carry seven zero.
All right. Item eight, Finance Committee, Amelia Williams. And Amelia, I want to apologize first of all for not texting you with items B and C. I wasn't exactly sure when you were going to be back, but these are items we've dealt with before and I'll be happy to take them when you get to them.
That's fine. And I wasn't here in committee. If whoever took them wants to take them, if not, I'd be more than happy to.
Who took that in committee?
Do you want to continue?
Sure, I'll take it. The Finance Committee, we're going to open it up with 8A, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds to acquire a portion of land from Frida Willingham for the Kendrick Avenue Improvement Project, project number 18BPS16, forward from committee with recommendation approval. And it looks like...
Brian. Brian's got to take it. I'm here to answer any questions you might have. This is the final tract that we have to acquire for the Kendrick Avenue project and this is the approval of the counter offer we have for it.
Move the resolution to pass.
Okay, we've got a motion of second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone else in the room need to speak to this? Kay Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right. Up next, we have a resolution to authorize an award from the Northwest Arkansas Community, to the Northwest Arkansas Community College Foundation from the city of Springdale's American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, to help fund initiatives that promote job training and workforce development for the city of Springdale, Arkansas, presented by Mayor Doug Sprouse.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Randall. And I'll go ahead and explain both of these because they're very similar and why they're on the agenda tonight. We... And we can, we probably should take them separately, but I'll go ahead and explain the... These are replacing resolutions that you passed awarding this money before. Nothing else is changing as far as the money, but because of some work that Cody has done with staff at Northwest Technical and also with InWAC, you know, these funds were approved by council to go toward the expansion of both of those campuses. And we, as we've done before with ARPA funds, working through our consultant, DRS, we found a better way to word the resolution. And this is their suggestion and it also helps both NWTI and InWAC with their ability to spend the funds still for the stated purposes, but it does relax some of the reporting requirements too, which I think is a help to everyone, including the city. So, that's why, and the reason we're bringing this forward when we are is because NWTI really needs to move forward with their land purchase and this will help free up funds for them to do that. Yeah. Rex, do you mind doing just B first? Thank you, sir. And a second. Okay. Any further discussion or questions?
So, the change to the resolution pulled out, I don't remember the original resolution, but pulled out the language about the intended use, is that right?
It didn't really pull out the language of the intended use, but it did, it does relax because we're going about it a way that is better, we believe, for the city and for the... But it relaxes... No, it does not change the intended use, but it does relax the reporting requirements to the federal government. Yes. Yes, and I see Dr. Riddle and Dr. Rollins both affirming that. But yes, the resolution, the intention is, the intent is the same and the way the money will be spent is the same. For the same purposes. Okay, we've got a motion of second for resolution 8B. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? Roll call, please.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carry seven zero. You gotta read the title.
I'll go ahead and do it. A resolution to authorize an award to the Northwest Technical Institute Education Foundation from the city of Springdale's American Rescue Plan Act, funds to help fund initiatives that promote job training and workforce development for the city of Springdale, Arkansas. Residents. Rex, is your, is your, is your motion still good? I think this also, I think one difference too, Jeff, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this also specifies that it go to both foundations. I'm not sure the other one did. And that was important. That was an important change we needed to make for ARPA. Okay. All right. Any other questions on C? If not, roll call, please.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you, Randall, for taking that. And item nine, Health Sanitation and Property Maintenance, Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Thank you. The committee did meet and as Mr. Gilbert mentioned, there's four items for the council tonight concerning raising of some red tagged properties. And I think there was a fifth item that we discussed, but the fifth item, if I remember correctly, was tabled right to...
The fifth item was tabled to the next committee meeting and actually, item 9A, I would, we've been in contact with the property owner, property owner's attorney, the one on Montrose, we request that be tabled to the August 8th city council meeting.
Okay.
That's the one, the very first one.
I don't need to read the ordinance to table it, do I?
No.
Anybody want to make that motion?
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any further comments or questions from the council? Does anyone in the room need to speak to this property? Okay. Roll call, please.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Table two, August 8th.
The second property is at 9B, is located at 6873 East Downham Road. And I'll have Tom address this, but I'll read the ordinance title. An ordinance ordering the raising, demolition, and removal of a certain structure within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, located at 6873 East Downham Road, to declare an emergency and for other purposes. That ordinance was forwarded to the council with recommendation for approval.
Has anybody contacted you, Ernest, on this?
Actually, I got an email today from the daughter of the property owner, Ms. Downham, and I, she had a couple of questions and replied to her and told her that it was on the agenda tonight. She did receive a copy of the letter that said it was going to go to committee last week and to council tonight. I advised her that she was welcome to come tonight to address the council and told her where the meeting was and what time it started. And I don't know if she's here, if anyone's here for this property or not, but I did get an email today.
That's the same daughter, I believe, that worked at Tyson?
Yes.
And just to freshen everybody's memory, that's a smaller house there to the north of the main house that this Margaret Downham lives in, just in great disrepair. Porches are falling off of it. No one lives in the house, but a lot of growth is happening out there and it's time to get cleaned up or fixed up, you know? Did the daughter say that they're going to do anything or just asking questions?
No, she said, let me find it. She said that... She said the house is not occupied and it's not been for at least five years. It's my understanding that eventually a road is to be built eliminating S-curves in front of this house and another house next door. If this were to happen in the near future, how would this impact the property? Would any of it be needed as right of way and would the house be taken as a result? House is owned by my 90-year-old mother. Money is not available to take care of what you're asking her to do. Then she questioned, then she questioned the timing of when we were, why we're bringing this for now and if there was anything they could do to keep the house.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion of second to adopt the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Does anyone need to speak to this that's here in the room tonight? Okay. Roll call, please.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
You have an emergency clause. If you pass it with an emergency clause, then she has 30 days. Not, she gets 60.
Okay, that was a motion and a second to approve the emergency clause. Okay, roll call, please.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Ordinance carry seven zero, emergency clause carry six one.
So, the second item is found at 9C. It deals with a structure on Gibbs Road. It's also a raising. Title to this ordinance is an ordinance ordering the raising, demolition, and removal of a certain structure, of a certain structure within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, located on Gibbs Nichols Road, to declare an emergency and for other purposes. This ordinance was also forwarded to the council with recommendation for approval.
I've not heard from anyone about this one.
Got a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments?
Anything new on this, Tom? Nothing new. I just want to make sure we all understand on one parcel, it's a shed. The other parcel is going to be the burnt trailer and the abandoned type trailer and the tents and whatnot. So, it's two different, it's actually two different pieces of property with different things on each one. In this ordinance?
Yeah.
One ordinance is for one parcel.
So, that's C and D.
Oh, C and D.
And we're, and Jeff, you've got a motion for C, correct?
Right. Yeah.
I put them on different ordinances because it's different parcels.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? We'll vote on C.
Okay.
9C. All right. Roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Emergency clause be adopted.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Ordinance carry seven zero, emergency clause carry six one.
So, item 9D apparently is the second tract that you're referring to. It actually says, an ordinance commonly known as Nichols Road, but it's Gibbs Nichols, I guess. And the title to this ordinance is an ordinance ordering the raising, demolition, and removal of a certain structure within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, located on Gibbs/Nichols Road, shed, in parentheses, to declare an emergency and for other purposes. This ordinance was also forwarded to council with recommendation for approval. Move the ordinance pass.
Okay. We've got a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Kay Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Second.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
I think the ordinance emergency clause carry seven zero.
All right. Thank you. Item 10, Parks and Recreation Committee, Chairman Mike Lawson. Mike?
Before us tonight, first one's a resolution, actually buying some loungers and some tables and chairs, I think some trash cans to match for Turnboe Park. I'll read the resolution. If there's questions, I'm sure Chad's here to answer any questions. A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of outdoor furniture for Turnboe Park and it was recommended for approval. And I think it was local company and it was 81,000 and some change, I think.
Yeah, we're, we've tried to stretch and Jill, correct me, but we've tried to stretch that plywood furniture that was bought with a grant about as far as it can go. So, a lot of people using, using that area now. So, we need to step up, I think.
I had two questions. One was about the last item on there, the 17,108. Do you know what that was? The largest amount at the end, designed, delivery and installation?
And assembly.
And assembly. And then on, on the tax, do we pay tax on that? It looks like it's almost... Is that just state tax that we're paying on that?
Oh, I...
Oh, we pay tax.
I don't have it here in front of me.
We pay city tax on that too?
Yeah. So, we get that back?
We get it back?
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense.
We do. Cody, we paid. Yeah, I thought we did. And if we're, if we're building a city building, we pay the permit fees and everything, just like anybody else. Yep.
I move that resolution to be adopted.
Hey Chad, I have a question. I was in here last night. What's the life of furniture?
You know, it doesn't really say, but the, most of those chairs are made out of high-density polyethylene, primarily from milk jugs. And anyway, they don't deteriorate.
Yeah, they're going to be made for this purpose.
Lot longer than they should.
Yeah, thanks to the pain. Yeah, that was a grant.
Didn't we paint those ridges?
Twice.
Will we have to paint these?
No, these will never be painted.
What happens if we get graffiti or...
They'll clean it off.
Clean it off.
Yeah. Okay. We have a, we had a motion.
We do.
We do. All right. No other questions? We'll vote.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
I will say Chad's got some unique answers. Milk jugs.
Well, if you were at the planning commission meeting last night, sometimes things come out of nowhere. We found out that there's a, one of our subdivisions is almost as big as Disney World in Paris. That was a new one. Sometimes we don't all make the same connections, do we?
All right. We had a, last week we had a second resolution and it was also recommended for approval tonight. I'll go ahead and read it and then we'll turn it over to Kobe if anybody's got any questions. A resolution authorizing the execution of professional service agreement to procure a contract for artificial turf and other purposes.
I can answer any questions. We did have a good meeting this week with Black Finn, with Chad and I and the mayor and gone over exactly what we expect as a city, what our specs are going to be before they really start doing interviews with these companies, so...
Learned more about turf than I ever knew in a 30-minute meeting.
I think, I think sitting in on that meeting sure makes sense of why we do some of this because there's not a one of us that's ever wrote a contract for turf or liked the waste management last week. But I sat in on that meeting as well and the guy that's there, obviously very knowledgeable, he explained way more about turf than we ever dreamed possible, so it certainly makes sense.
We're doing this contract the same way that we did with the solid waste RFP. Um, the, the company, the vendor that wins the contract will reimburse the city for this amount.
Second.
Motion of second to approve the resolution, any other questions or comments? Anyone? Kay Denise?
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry seven zero.
All right, item eleven, turn it over to Ernest.
Thank you, this is an ordinance amending chapter one ten, article six, street names and address numbers to change the name of, of an existing city street. And this would officially change the name of Savage Street to Marty Street. And you may remember why we picked Marty. Because the original developer, original developer of the subdivision's name was Marty Savage. So, that's why it was Savage Street, so it just made sense to change it to Marty.
Got a motion of second to adopt the ordinance, any other questions or comments? Roll call please. Wait, 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 anybody here to speak to this? I'm sorry Denise, okay, go ahead.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Carry seven zero, we don't put emergency clause on these because it does take a while to get the maps updated and street signs changed and post office notified and,
Yep.
Go on, I could go on and on. I think this is a good thing.
Yep. All right, thank you. Item twelve, any comments from council?
Mayor, I'll just, uh, maybe let Kobe comment. Uh, he and I had a conversation, I think after our turf meeting the other day. We're talking about bringing forward this same idea that we did for turf tonight for lighting. And Kobe can address that just so it doesn't catch anybody off guard.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we're going to have that ready for committee this next week. They're still working on some companies in Houston that are supposed to be in discussion, but same concept, uh, with lighting, we were, we were just going to talk to a company and have them give us some bids, but when you get into it, there's competitors out there that if they knew we had an opportunity for this, they would come bid on it. And, uh, we've had guys say, we'll fly there tomorrow if you'll let us look at the business. So, I think we're going to be able to save, um, I'd say at least two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, maybe up to four hundred thousand dollars, uh, by doing the same process. And once again, we'll write the contract so that the procurement consultant fees are reimbursed by the vendors, so.
What lighting are you talking about?
Uh, there's going to be lighting, uh, at JB Hunt Park, it's part of the bond program, lighting at JB Hunt Park.
A branch of LED.
Yeah, Shaw, uh, and Randall Tyson. Yeah, three different parks will have new lighting. So, it'll be a pretty big contract.
Right. Okay, any other comments from council? City attorney?
Believe it or not, I do have one small thing real quick. I just want to give a shout out to the, uh, IT personnel and the, the, uh, building supervision personnel, as you know, a lot of the departments have been moving into the new building last week and this week. I have been absolutely amazed, I don't want to jinx it, but how quickly and how efficiently it's been going. We haven't got to move yet, but we may get to a week early because they've been so efficient. I just, I'm just amazed that they, how well that they've done this so far. Like I said, I hope I don't jinx it, but it's just amazing how smoothly it's going. Just wanted to say, give them a shout out.
Just got one thing, uh, Cody, have you been here the whole meeting? Because I didn't see you at the first one, I was trying to stumble through my explanation on the redo of those two resolutions for N W T I and N WAC. If I'd have seen you, I'd have let you do that. Did I say everything close? Okay, all right, thank you. Um, and just to let you know, we may be doing the same thing with Upscale.